Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the Ventura County Planning Commission. If you would please rise and face the flag. Place your hand over your right. Right hand over your heart. Feet after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, please put your cellphones on silence or airplane mode or whatever. Otherwise, I'll have the county council collect your phone from you.[43.32][43.32](Laughter). Just seeing if he's awake over there. All right. At this time, roll call, please.
Commissioner McGee?
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne?
Here.
Commissioner Onstott?
Here.
Commissioner Westner?
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Item number first, Public Comments section. This is a section set aside for the public to comment to the planning commission on any matter not set forth on the agenda already. Please be advised under the Government Code section, commonly known as the Brown Act, we can only ask some basic questions and just receive information. We cannot deliberate or decide. Do you have anybody for the Public Comments section? Seeing none or hearing none, then we'll move on to item number five, Approval of the June 20th Minutes. Commissioners?
Move approval?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.[104.72][104.72](Laughter). Okay. Item number six, Approval of June 27th Minutes. What is the pleasure?
Move adoption of the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Voting in progress. I'm locked. There we go. All right. All right. The real reason we're here today is, where are we? Yeah, item number eight? What happened? Oh, seven, there it is. I'm sorry. The LU-11-0052 AT&amp;T Wireless. And whom do we have today?
Good morning, Commissioners. Chair Westner, Christina Buehro of the Ventura County Planning Division. I'm going to present the item for you today, item seven. Before you today is a request by AT&amp;T Wireless to be granted a new conditional use permit, number LU-1152, for a new wireless facility. The project site is located in the unincorporated area of Miramonte at 11400 North Ventura Avenue, which is also known as State Route 33. The project site, when you see the aerial to the left, is a rectangular lot and it has a lot, it's a vacant lot with much vegetation surrounding in and around the parcel. The zoning land use designations for the parcel are, the zoning is commercial plan development. The general plan designation is existing community and the Ojai Valley area plan designation is commercial. So, the parcel, looking at the aerial, the parcel is outlined in green and to the north is commercial zoning. And surrounding the parcel to the west, south, and east is residential zoning. And looking at a larger view of the community, the parcel again is outlined in green and, as I said before, the parcel to the north is commercial development and surrounding is, surrounding to the west, south, and east is residential. There is a residential planned development to the west, to the east, excuse me, and to the west is a existing mobile home community. Looking at an oblique image, the project site is adjacent to State Route 33, also known as North Ventura Avenue, and adjacent to Wiglund Avenue. There is a single-family dwelling approximately 10 feet from the existing, the proposed shelter, which I'll discuss in a second. So, it's right around this area. And throughout the project, we have not heard any comments or concerns from any of the surrounding neighbors, including this, this property right here next to the facility. Some pictures of the project site. This is the site looking to North Ventura Avenue from the project site. So, we're looking west. And as I, as I mentioned before, there's several oak trees and a lot of vegetation in its vacant lot. And then this is the approximate location of the, of the cell, of the wireless facility in this red box. And this is a view of the site looking from State Route 33. So, what's before you today? It's a conditional use permit requested by the applicant to authorize the operation and maintenance of a new wireless facility. The facility is going to be designed as a faux eucalyptus tree with a height, a tip height of 42 feet and the RAD center, which is the center line of the, of the panel antennas, would be at 37 feet in height. And the construction of a 238 square foot equipment shelter and the installation of approximately 14 antennas, which are including GPS, microwave, and panel antennas at various heights on the mono-eucalyptus, and the construction of two outdoor equipment cabinets that would be located within the shelter area. Looking at the site plan, the green outline is the lease area. The red outline is the property line. The purple is the mono-eucalyptus and the brown is the shelter. You see that we have setbacks of five feet at the rear of the property and five feet at the side. Looking at the elevation plan, you see that the tip of the, of the mono-eucalyptus is at 42 feet and then the RAD center where the panel antennas will be is 37 feet. And as you see from the bottom elevation plan, the project site slopes downward. So, the shelter will be built into the slope and in and among the existing oak trees. Photo simulation, it's kind of hard to see where the proposed facility is going to go, but as you can see, it's going to be stealth of nature and it's going to be blending in with the existing fauna and trees that are around the project site. And this is just another photo simulation looking southeast of the site. So, what does a faux eucalyptus tree look like? These are some samples that we have had in, go through the planning division in the past. The one on the, on your right is actually a recently permitted faux eucalyptus tree. And these are just some coverage maps of the site. The site is within both red boxes and the top image shows the coverage, which is pretty weak without the facility. And the, the bottom photo shows the coverage with the facility at 44 feet. So, you can tell from these two coverage maps that the applicant has demonstrated that they, a need for the facility because it would provide stronger coverage for AT&amp;T customers within the Ojai-Miramonte area. So, a negative declaration was prepared and, for the project and that demonstrated that there was less than significant impacts as a result of the proposed project. And the public comment period was from May 4th to June 3rd, June 3rd of this year and we received no comments or concerns about the project. And the project was recommended for approval unanimously by the Ojai Valley MAC. So, staff recommends that you, that you, your commission approve the project as proposed pursuant to the recommended actions that are in your staff report today. We have the applicant here, Jerry Ambrose, and representative from AT&amp;T who can answer any questions you may have, and I'm also available.
Okay. Before you ask questions of staff, any disclosures? Starting with Paul.
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
As an owning AT&amp;T stock, I have no disclosures. I don't think I control anything.
Well, I think the rule is you have to have more than 2%. If you have more than 2%, you probably wouldn't be here. I have no disclosures either.
No disclosures.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Duquesne?
I just have, I just have two questions about the homes that are close. Does, does the, the home that's in closest proximity and the antennas are at a, at a certain height, does it meet safety standards? Because it is awfully close.
Yes, the, the structure, well, the residence that's next to the house is approximately 15 feet from the actual mono-eucalyptus, maybe a little more, more like 18 feet from the center of the mono-eucalyptus. So, it does meet the setbacks. There's also existing oak trees of probably higher height than the proposed mono-eucalyptus surrounding the project site or, and inside the project, the vacant parcel.
But the, but the safety from the non-ionizing radiation or whatever, it's emitted from their microwaves, whatever, it meets whatever safety standards are in place for the industry?
Are you meaning the RF frequencies?
Right, right. Anything, yeah.
Well, the, the federal government regulates that portion of any, any wireless facility. So, we have no, we have no jurisdiction to comment on that or whatnot, but as far as the-
No, I have, I have the ability to ask whether or not it meets safety standards.
The applicant can speak for to that, but as I understand it, yes, it does.
Thank you. That's all.
Yes. Yes, you made a comment that the property is going to be lower at the, the project's going to be lower at the rear of the parcel. Does that mean it's going to slope down away from the roadway, which appears to be below the, lower than what appears to be the back of the parcel in your, in your-
Yes, yes. As you see from the elevation at the northeast, the project site slopes downward. So, the, on, looking at the elevation where the, my red dot is, that's State Route 33. So, yes, it does slope downward.
So, the grade, grade will be sloping down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, the shelter will be built into the, partially into the slope.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Paul?
Did I hear you correctly to say that there are trees on that site and surrounding there actually is higher, higher than this eucalyptus?
Uh, well, they're oak trees, so-
Lot, but a tree.
Yeah.
They're higher actually than this, this-
Yeah. If you look at, let's see if I have a good picture here. I guess this will be a good picture. There's oak trees and eucalyptus trees at the rear of the property. And so, the, the rear of the property actually is on a hill. So, if you look at the parcel from the street, there's trees on a small ridge line. So, those obviously would be higher than what's, you know, where the facility is going to be located.
So, that's more to do to elevation than actual height of the tree?
Yeah. But there's, there's several oak trees on the property surrounding it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Onstott?
Following up on Commissioner Duquesne, are you prepared to say that there's no health and safety issue here or are you deferring to the federal government regulation of the situation? Two separate issues.
Well, for the SEQA standards, public health was, and the like, was, was analyzed by the Environmental Health Division and they said that there was no significant, or they said that there was less than significant impacts to public health regarding-
I don't know what that means. It could be quite significant to the person living there.
Yeah.
Are, are we deferring to federal reg? I, we can follow up with the applicant, I'm sure.
Chairman Westner, Commissioner Onstott, the, there's a couple of issues or three issues involving public health and safety. One is whether this thing's going to fall over. And that's subject to the building permit requirements and there's going to be a building permit required and foundation design. And so, I'm pretty confident that our building division will not allow a mono-eucalyptus to go up that is going to fall over onto the neighbor. The next issue would be any hazardous materials that are used as part of this facility such as diesel fuel for a emergency generator. And so, that's the issue that environmental health would look at and the fire department to make sure that material is adequately contained and protected and prevented from having a, either a leak or a fire. The third would be concerns over radio frequency emissions. This facility is subject to getting an FCC permit. They can't get a permit if they don't meet the federal safety standards for radio frequency emissions. And so, that's not something we look at. The county is sort of preempted from questions of radio frequency emissions, but we do look at hazardous materials and, and the physical safety of the, of the structure.
So, there will have to be some form of clearance then before this matter can proceed?
Or do they, are they certified after the fact or before the fact? They would have, I, I would have to defer to the applicant as to whether they actually get their FCC license to operate this facility before it's built or whether they get it after it's approved in its final form.
What, what, well, one way or the other, you're going to receive some proof of compliance?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Duquesne?
It was my understanding that we are not preempted from asking and acquiring information. The only thing that we are preempted from is trying to assert some kind of control over it. Is that correct?
You know, the subject of asserted control, I would defer to county council on that one and he may care to weigh in. But my understanding of the situation is that we can ask and your commission can consider any, ask for and get any information you wish. It's just that the county can't make decisions to approve or deny a facility based upon radio frequency emission questions.
As long as they comply, which was what my question was.
That is, that is correct. And it's, it's our understanding and sort of a given that all of the facilities we look at have to comply with FCC regulations for radio frequency emissions.
Thank you.
Any further questions of Christina at this point? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I have Mr. Jerry Ambrose for the applicant. I assume you're speaking for the applicant, sir?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Your name and address?
Hi, good morning. My name is Jerry Ambrose. I'm here on behalf of AT&amp;T. My address is 3905 State Street, Santa Barbara, California.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to add to Christina's presentation. And in response to your questions about the FCC compliance, as part of our application, we did submit an FCC compliance letter that was signed by an engineer and it discusses how the project will comply with the FCC standards.
So, are you an engineer or are you more in real estate?
I'm not an engineer, no. I'm not.
You're in the real estate end?
The permitting and real estate end, correct.
Okay. Is there an engineer here?
AT&amp;T cannot construct a facility that does not comply with the FCC. They're closely regulated as part of their license.
Uh-huh. Is there an engineer here?
No, not with me today, no.
Do you have enough knowledge to explain the, the falloff, the height relative to the nearest receptor and-
I personally do not know.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Can you speak to the, I guess the grading that's going to occur on the site to accommodate this, this proposed facility?
I'm sorry, did you say grading?
Grading.
Yeah, there will be some grading for the equipment area.
Can you describe what exactly is going to happen and how the engineering is going to go?
The, just that they, well, obviously, we're going to go through the building, building department process. We haven't prepared final plans yet to show, we don't, haven't submitted a actual grading plan yet. Basically, they'll grade from the back and then level it out and then the fill will go down, down the hill below. But at this point in the process, we, we aren't required to submit a formal grading plan. That will be developed.
I have a question about power backup. I, I think I heard the, the fact that a generator is going to be on-site.
There won't be a generator on-site. There'll be a generator receptacle so that if there were an emergency, we could bring a generator to the site. There are backup battery units that will be installed as part of the, the construction.
So, the backup, power backup is going to be battery packs?
Correct. And those last for a certain period of time and if, for some reason, there's an outage that goes beyond that, then they have the ability to bring in a generator.
Okay. My concern, the reason for my questions is backup generators tend to be, have to be maintained and they have to be operated at a certain number, certain period of time during, you know, windows of time to make sure they're there and working if you need them. And I just didn't want this to be occurring in the middle of the night.
Right. Yeah, again, they're only brought there if there's a, a sustained power outage.
Okay.
That could be any time of the day, I suppose, but there's no intent to bring a generator and keep it there for any extended period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Any, Commissioner Duquesne?
One thing I forgot about, I've never seen a faux eucalyptus. Do you have a picture of one?
Christina provided a couple in her presentation.
You have a three.
(Laughter) Sorry.
Relatively new to the, to this-
I, I wasn't able to look at those pictures closely enough. Yeah. Okay. It looks like there's a lot of material that could, could suffer in high winds. What kind of ongoing maintenance do you have or, or evaluation of, of? Have you ever seen ones that are affected by the wind in, in high wind areas? I've seen faux pines lose all of their needles, so it ends up being worse actually than just a monopole with the, with the rays. It has these little spike things that are supporting the, the needles.
I have not, I have not personally seen it. I've heard about that. There, there is an ongoing maintenance of the site. Someone visits the site once every, probably every six weeks. Any kind of cleanup, they have to clean, clean things up. And I know the county also has a monitoring compliance program where staff actually comes to the site and looks at it.
I didn't see one with regard to this particular problem with the faux trees, which I think are brilliant, I think are great. It's just that on occasion, I've seen in, in areas that, that get a lot of wind, they, they suffer. And so, there needs to be something more proactive. Do you have something like that in any of your other installations?
Again, just, just the, just the ongoing maintenance of, of the project.
Yeah, that sounds like cleanup rather than, that sounds like something on the floor rather than the, the installation itself.
Well, as, as part of the approval, we would be required to keep it as, as proposed and as constructed. So, if there was some kind of an issue, if leaves fell off or something, we would be required to replace them.
So, you said you heard of that too? Where did you hear about that?
Excuse me?
You said that you heard about this problem that I just brought up. Where, where did you hear about it?
Oh, some of the monopines, I've heard about that.
The monopines?
The monopines, with the little, the little needles.
Little tiny needles?
Little tiny needles growing around, right.
And then what ends up is the, the little structures that hold the needles just end up bare. And it's, it's uglier than a bottle brush, but you know, 100 times as big.
Well, if it's empty, I can, I know what you're, I would, can imagine what you're talking about with just a bunch of branches and no, no foliage.
Yeah. And I, and, and I don't know how similar the eucalyptus is.
Well, there's no little needles. They're, they're bigger leaf, leaf structures.
Obviously.
There's a materials board. Is the materials board here?
No.
Oh, it's not here. Okay. We had a, we have a materials board that's with staff that shows, shows what it is. It's, they're actually large, large leaves and large branches. We don't deal with a lot of little, we don't have thousands and thousands of little, little needles.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I can't really tell from the picture at all what it's going to look like and I haven't seen one of these. So, that's my concern, having seen the, the pines suffer in the wind, I wonder if there could be a condition.
Christina, I know that staff visits the, the property throughout the length of the, the CUP is valid for 10 years. I think there's six or seven visits or more as part of, as part of the staff's compliance.
We'll visit with staff on that. That's our best management practice and we'll deal with that. And that's also the phone numbers to call on those kinds of things that we can monitor, so.
That's all provided with the, right, zoning clearance.
Right. We'll get to that. Any other questions of the applicant? I have just a couple.
Okay.
First of all, are there any conditions that are set forth in the CUP that you disagree with?
No, we concur with the conditions as proposed.
Okay. And also the consideration that this could be used as co-location for other wireless?
Right. If someone were to approach AT&amp;T, definitely, it would be designed that way.
Okay. As long as you're clear on that. All right. If there's no other questions, then thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody? I have no speaker cards. Pardon me. Battling a cold here. Does anybody else like to either speak for or against? Hearing and seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. Any final comments from staff? I know Mr. Baca wanted to comment on the maintenance.
Yes, Chairman Westner and members of the commission, I'd just like to direct your attention to condition 18 of the proposed conditional use permit. And this involves essentially the requirement that the operator maintain the site looking the way it does and the photo simulations that we have on file and the materials. And so, this would be the basis by which we would be periodically inspecting the site and seeing if, if it's falling apart. And if it has, they have to clean it up and reconstruct the, the branches and leaves and everything else. So, the entire purpose of this condition is so it doesn't end up looking like a Q-tip. So.
Commissioner Rodriguez, do you have a question?
Yes, let's have a response. I don't recall. I've read a couple of these, obviously. Was there an inspection schedule built into the conditions in response to your comment?
The inspection for-
About that the site is inspected to be sure it's maintained. Who inspects it?
We have a condition compliance person on staff that inspects it. And when the entitlements are approved, they're put into our cella system and there's a routine inspection that happens.
Okay.
And the routine is once every three years. That's when they're inspected.
Okay. That's what I was looking for.
Yes.
I would also point out that if we receive a complaint about this very issue, of course, that the inspection schedule, you know, there could be other spontaneous inspections due to receiving a complaint that the facility is falling apart.
So, Chair Westner, also, I'd like to address Commissioner Duquesne's problem, or issue that she raised with the letter of compliance. We do have in our file a letter of compliance from AT&amp;T dated April 29th, 2011 that talks about the RF exposure. So, RF exposure to persons near the site. So, they say that the FCC states in 47 CFR 1.1310 that the maximum permissible exposure level for RF radiation for the general population is between 0.6 and 1 milliwatts per centimeter squared, depending on the frequency of the transmitter. And this is their letter of compliance that this particular site is going to meet that standard. So, we do have that in the file.
Thank you for that.
Commissioner Rodriguez, you have another question?
Just one comment. The applicant representative says there will be no generator on-site. Batteries will be the backup power source on it. Can we include something in the conditions that if, if in fact that changes and a generator is put on-site, that we put some limit on the maintenance hours of that generator so we don't have it going off in the middle of the night in that particular area? In other words, you can do maintenance during daylight hours if you have to run the generator just to make sure it's working correctly. And I realize he said there won't be any on-site, but the site's subject to obviously some, some potential expansion if some other vendor comes in and requests to put some equipment on it.
Chairman Westner, Commissioner Rodriguez, if they wish to change the project description to include a, a generator on-site on a permanent basis, that would also include fuel storage and various other things, that would be a modification of the permit. So, we would be, we'd be back here discussing the case again. And so, we don't really need to put a condition because that's just outside the scope of the permit that's before you today.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? There was a question posed to county council regarding control and jurisdiction and you shook your head that you thought you could respond to it or did we recall the question at all?
I recall the, the question and, and yes, the FCC does basically preempt the county's ability to regulate the radio frequency type issues are, but that being said, as, has been discussed previously, the county does have the ability under SEQA to look at the whole of the action. And so, that would include the radio frequency type issues. In terms of establishing whether or not there's a significant impact, we would defer to the FCC and, and the letter that Ms. Prillhart cited, stated that there, there would be no health effect. And so, that, that is, would be sufficient to basically base our conclusion that it wouldn't in fact have a, a health and, and safety issue under SEQA.
What I understood from the letter that was read to us is that it met standards.
Right.
Right. And standards in any given area are often used and commonly used to establish, you know, baseline or standards of significance under SEQA. And so, the issue here would be health and safety and the FCC again is regulating this area. They, they set that standard. They preempt us there. And so, under SEQA, we would make sure that this facility meets that federal standard, which it does.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing and seeing none. What is the wish of the commissioners regarding this permit?
Allow me to staff recommendation.
All right, have a motion? All right, have a motion?
I'll say it.
I have a second motion on recommended actions. Any discussion? Hearing none? We gonna get...
How do you work this thing?
All this day of vote, we gotta catch up, right? Technology's slowing us down here. You ready? Yep. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, best of luck to you. All right. Moving on to item number eight. SES A McCorn, West Lomas, case number PL13-0053. And Christina's up again? Ready to go?
Yep. Good morning again, Commissioners, Chair Westner, Christina Borrell, Planning Staff. Before I begin my presentation, I want to call your attention to Exhibit 9, which is an errata memorandum. And this memorandum dated July 25th, 2013, just clarifies what the project history is. And it just states that there have been three additional permit adjustments that were inadvertently left out of the staff report. And those are on page two of the errata memorandum, and they're in bold. So the project for you today is a request by SES Americom Inc. to be granted a minor modification of an existing conditional use permit for a satellite control and communications facility. This facility is located in the unincorporated area of Somis at 5990 Solano Verde Drive. The project site, was looking at the aerial, is at the end of Solano Verde Drive. It's approximately 1.2 miles from Balcom Canyon Road to the west, and approximately one and a half or so miles from Bradley Road, which is to the south of the project site. The zoning and land use designations for the parcel, the parcel has a zoning designation of open space 20 acres and a general plan designation of open space. The parcel size is approximately 41.6 acres, and the proposed new CUP area is going to be 6.5 acres. Looking at an oblique aerial image, the project site is located in a valley, and as I said, is at the end of Solano Verde Road, which is a private road within a private residential community. The nearest residence is this residence owned by Mr. LaBaron, and that is approximately 929 feet east of the project site. The next residence is located south of the project site. Looking at the community, we have the project site up at the top of the aerial, and this is Balcom Canyon Road, and at the bottom page is Bradley Road. And this greenish area is the portion of the Solano Verde residential community. Some site photos. The site has been on the property since 1974, when it was granted a conditional use permit by the planning commission. And this is a photo of the site looking southeast. In the background, you can kind of see a row of large trees, and that is Mr. LaBaron's property. And Solano Verde Drive is just below that. And you can see some mature landscaping, which was required by modification for this permit in approximately 1991 to screen the facility. And the letters that you see in yellow are the existing, or actually the proposed antennas dishes that the applicant is proposing, and I'll discuss that in a second. And this is a photo of the project site looking east. And this is just a close picture of the site, and you can see that here's a proposed antenna B and proposed antenna A. These are the existing dishes. So as I mentioned, the project was originally approved in 1974 with a CUP. There's been several modifications to the project from 1981 to 1985. And there's also been, were two appeals of the project to the planning commission and board, and that was an appeal by several property owners in the area, and it was an appeal of a time extension. And there's also been some permit adjustments from 2001 to 2009, and then we also have the subject application. So the proposed use, as I mentioned, is a request to continue with the existing facility, the satellite control and communications facility for an additional 10-year period. And it also includes the future installation of five antennas, which would range in height from 14 feet 9 inches to 36 feet 1 inch in diameter for the dishes. Also, a future installation of approximately 15 small mounting receive-only antennas in and around the existing building that I'll show you on the site plan in a minute. And those would be approximately 1 foot 7 inches to 11 feet 9 inches in diameter. And also, the applicant requests that the CUP boundary be reduced to 6.5 acres, and they would also like to remove an existing 170-foot tower. So looking at the site plan, the purple line around the site is the proposed CUP boundary, that's going to be 6.5 acres. The blue is the Solano Verde Road, and then this is the access road. The green is the existing antennas, and the orange, or reddish color, are the five proposed dishes.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you point out where the 36-foot antenna is going to be? I'm colorblind, I've got no help here.
That is going to be...
On your map over here, too?
Yeah. I can show you where approximately it's going to be. Dave, do you know the... Here? So adjacent to Solano Verde.
Okay.
And those are ranges in the heights that it would be. It would be a maximum of 36 feet in diameter.
Thank you.
So looking at the site, hopefully you can see the elevations, these are the existing antennas. And to give you a visual reference, I believe it's, this one is a 36-foot dish. And you also have the PowerPoint on your iPad, so you can better see the diameters. And this large one is the existing 73-foot dish. So the environmental document that was prepared was an addendum to an existing mitigated negative declaration. And the mitigated negative declaration did have a requirement for landscape screening of the facility, and that was confirmed to be adequate through site inspection by staff on May 1st of this year. And so the mitigated negative declaration addendum says that the proposed project would not create any additional impacts to the environment that have not previously been addressed in the original MND. We did receive two public comments from the adjacent property owner, Mr. LaBaron, and those are, the letter and our county responses are in Exhibit 6 and 8 of the staff report. So this just shows what the screening of the facility has been like. In 1991, the top picture, you can see that there's no screening, so it's pretty evident that you have a facility. And then this picture is, at the bottom, is in April 2013, and it shows that it's completely screened from any view. So compatibility of the project. Well, as we mentioned before, the site is screened from public view, and that's done by mature landscaping, and the equipment would be required to continue to blend in with the surrounding area. The site is located in a valley, and this is to deter any view of the site, and also is required for the operation of the facility, so there's no interference with any satellite transmissions or receiving parts of it. The 170-foot tower will be removed by the end of this year. And the nearest residence is approximately 929 feet east of the project site and within a private residential area. We did extend the noticing requirements for this hearing today to 1,000 feet, so that included this residence as well. And the nearest public viewing locations is 1.2 miles east of the site, which is Balcom Canyon Road. So staff recommends that your commission approve the project as proposed through the recommended actions before you today. We also have the applicant here to answer any questions that you may have.
Good, before we go any further, once again, we need to disclose if any ex parte or information not contained in the record has been received by a commissioner. Commissioner Paul?
No disclosures.
I have no disclosures.
No disclosures.
The only disclosure I have is last century I visited the site at a properly noticed and appropriately convened planning commission tour of the facility. Other than that, I have no disclosures.
No disclosure.
Last century. It was last century. Okay, go ahead, take your shot now. Any questions of staff this time?
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner?
Under this, there's potential for, I think, a maximum of five new antennas, ranging from size up to the 36-foot. Would, do we know, depending on where those would, based on the map, where they would be put, would the mature landscaping cover those antennas as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff this time? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Are there any residences north of the project towards South Mountain?
I believe not, no.
Okay, do we have any, do we have any record of any subdivisions for residential purposes in the area?
Just the proposed, well, just the Solano Verde, which was a track map approved in 1980.
Okay, can you explain to me the purpose of this site? It sounded rather important from the rather limited review it got in the staff report.
The applicant can speak specifically to that, but as I understand it, it's a satellite control and communications facility, so it has some receiving and transponding components to the project. It does have Department of Defense satellites, and as well as commercial satellites too. But I would defer like the specifics of the site to the applicant.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dukas?
Are there any other installations like this in Ventura County?
There's two.
Yeah?
Yeah.
And one's up high on a hill, and one's down low in a valley?
This one is low in the valley, and I believe the other one is high on hill.
Uh-huh. So there really is, there's very few places where this kind of installation is appropriate, is that correct?
Yes, I understand it, yeah.
And Mr. LaBaron's home was built when, or when was it?
The track map for the Solano Verde subdivision was approved in 1980. The site has been there since 1974, and Mr. LaBaron's home was, a zoning clearance was approved in about 1991, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
So there is like a seven-year gap.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further questions of staff this time? Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I'm just curious, could you, could you put back up that overview of the site that had a bunch of squares or circles on it?
The site plan?
Yeah, it was an overview.
The antenna locations.
Okay, here's the site plan.
See what you started?
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, where is the, if you know, what's the location of this 170-foot tower that's going to be removed?
That is approximately here.
Up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that'll be completely removed by December 31st of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff this time? Hearing none, thank you Christina. At this time, let me just explain anything just for a minute, since we have an opposition. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, the public hearing will be opened. Proponents of the permit will be allowed to speak, and then the opponents will speak, and then the applicant will get the final say in the public hearing. This is set forth by the board of supervisors, so if you don't like how it's done, call them. All right, at this time, I have two cards, Mr. David Weslin and Mr. Michael Noon. Who would like to speak first?
David Weslin.
Weslin, name and address, sir.
David Weslin.
We have to get it on the record.
David Weslin, and my address is 1034 Colina Vista in Ventura.
Okay.
And I am a manager of this facility, and I have been there since 1990. And I have been in the industry since 1973 and other locations and the government beyond that. Our facility here is requiring some minor growth. We had 18 antennas permitted back in 1995, and at that point in time, we were running, I think, 16 or 15. Since 2004, we filled up those 18 antenna slots. And our company has grown considerably. We were a regional satellite operator at that time, and we have since been becoming international operators, so we have satellites in the Pacific and the Atlantic. So our need to control those satellites has increased in that period of time. What we do now, what we did before, so you understand, is we were a heavy communications company operated by GE at that time. We transmitted television like NBC and government communications throughout the United States. Now, those particular things are handled by individual companies, and our particular operation now is to control the existing satellites. Every satellite that's up there that we own, we actually fly and keep it in a specific location that's designated by the FCC. As that satellite rotates around the earth, it tends to move a little bit, and action has to be taken to keep it in its particular location because of the earth's tilt, there's a lot of mathematics involved, but it tends to wobble and move around a little bit. So each antenna, most of our antennas now are just there for satellite control. And because we are an international group, we need to have locations in various parts of the earth. And we're on the western United States, we're the only facility that SES owns, we can look into the Pacific and handle a lot of satellites that are located over the Pacific but still operate in the United States. We have other facilities in Europe and on the east coast of the United States that do the same thing. So we need additional possibilities for antennas. I have a requirement to install one 6-meter antenna, and rather than just go for one antenna, I figured it, you know, there may be possible uses for more antennas down the road, so I put in a quest for five, just in case. That's about it. Oh, we're also doing a renewal. I'm not used to this. I'm a satellite manager. We're renewing our CUP. I was encouraged by the planning department, since the requirements to renew and the requirements for a minor mod are the same, that I should just combine the two and do both at the same time. And as we're coming up for a review and a renewal in 2015, I put them all together. And as we're coming up for a review and a renewal in 2015, I put them all together. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes. What is the staffing on site?
Currently, it's eight people, including myself. I'm the manager, and I have seven employees.
Is that 24-hour-a-day staffing?
Yes, it is.
So people are coming and going?
There's one, essentially, 60% of the time, there's one person at that location. So at midnight, and at 4:00 p.m., and at 8:00 a.m., there is a car going up and down that road. That's correct.
So there isn't any residential issue where somebody's there 24/7 individually?
No.
Okay.
They come and go.
What is the security considerations there? What's in place?
We have a chain link fence around the facility, and we have television cameras looking at our two gates that entrance the facility. We have no, had no issues. The gated community has a gate down on Bradley Road that requires a combination to get through that gate. And generally, people, only the residents in that location and people that work. There's a lot of agriculture inside that community. There's a lot of agriculture going on.
Inside that gate that you have to go through?
Yeah, that main gate. There's, everyone has lemon trees growing on their property, so there's a lot of people coming and going through that main gate, but rarely do they ever come up to where we are because we're at the very end.
Who is the property owner?
Of, of our property?
Your site?
SES Americom California. Previously was, previously owned was by GE American Communications, and before that, it was RCA Communications.
Okay. There's been obviously comments about private road and road maintenance and homeowners association, which...
Yes, we entered in an agreement, we, well, we were, a condition of our existence was established in the Board of Supervisors meeting in 1997, that, at that time, we had 19 employees, and they made a decision that we had 35% of the traffic on that road. So we agreed to provide 35% of a rebuilding of the roads should that happen, and we also agreed to provide 15% of any maintenance done to the road or to the main gate area. And we have complied with that. They rebuilt the road several years ago, and, and our portion was like $130,000 to help rebuild that road.
Okay, thank you.
And we've also contributed, when they send me invoices, I pay them. We don't actually have a written agreement between the two of us. We submitted a letter to the HOA back in that time as we were required to do, and they did not respond to it. But I have sent letters to each and every HOA president since then advising them if they were, didn't have knowledge of the condition, so they would understand what our requirements were, and we have made those payments. We also own an adjacent lot that we bought as part of that process, Lot Number 37. So we are part of the homeowners' organization, and we pay dues, and we pay water meter, which is a significant thing in that location.
A lot of dry farming.
Even though we can't use it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions to David? Commissioner Dukas?
What would the consequences be if you were not able to get this approval?
It would make our expansion or our ability to continue on with the business more difficult. I can take an antenna down and put another one up, but that's an expensive process. These antennas that we, the only two that I have see on the future are extremely small. One of them is like a six-meter and maybe a four-meter dish. These are like 20 feet. They're very tiny. I'd like to have them. And as far as the, the monitoring antennas, I mean, typically, a dish network or a DirecTV antenna would fall into that thing because we're required to have a permit to put those type of antennas in. They're, you know, this size, and when it says 15, it sounds like a lot, but in 15 of them, you can put them in like a 10-foot square. And they're typically, a lot of customers operate that way. You see them on top of gas stations, or they communicate with a certain band of frequencies that operate on those small dishes, and that's what we use them for. We do have one little bit bigger one that, that typifies what our cable TV headends use to receive satellite signals. It's three and a half meters, and it allows us to move. It's like a test antenna, and we can move it to any location and simulate what a cable TV organization is receiving. If they're having trouble and they think the satellite's causing the problem, we can go verify whether or not it's doing it. We don't transmit out of those little antennas. They just, and they're all really clustered around the building because they don't, they're not going to be sitting out where, where you can see them pretty much. Another, another one of our conditions was everything that we put in is earth toast since that time. And even if we move one to another place, we still have to repaint it at that point in time, and we've been compliant in that area.
Thanks for that. What, how would you like to respond to the charge that you're a target for acts of terror?
I don't understand that, the reasoning for that, because there is nothing going on at that site that would want anybody to come and target it for any particular reason. The only communications that we actually have are the FAA. We share an FAA load with our eastern counterpart where we provide communications to unmanned towers throughout the United States and the Caribbean. We can move that back and forth between each other.
I didn't understand that.
Unmanned FAA towers at small airports where they've laid off people, and there's nobody there anymore. There's approximately 53 of them in the United States and about 10 of them in the Caribbean where there's, actually, in the Caribbean, they use them directly for communications back to their headquarters, wherever that might be.
And your facility is involved with communications with those on the East Coast? The unmanned towers?
We share, we share the load. Like when Sandy went up the East Coast, all their communications were transferred to us. Otherwise, we share half, we have 50/50 between the two of us to provide diversification in case there's a problem. As far as the terrorists coming to us, all of our sites are doubled so that if one site has a problem, there's another site to take care of it, and it would be on either in the Pacific somewhere or on the East Coast. So if we lose our site for some particular reason, there's no, there's nothing to gain by taking the site out by a terrorist or for whatever reason. It doesn't compute to me.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions to David at this time? You'll be back, so.
Thank you.
Have a seat. Michael Noon. Name and address, sir?
Yes, good morning to the commission. My name is Michael Noon, 4 Research Way, Princeton, New Jersey. Just so you know, I'm engineering and operations manager for SES, and Dave's facility falls under my jurisdiction, so. I'm really here to support Dave and to answer any other questions that Dave may not be able to answer. I'd just like to expand on a couple of points that I, I heard raised. Number one, you know, from a terrorist act, we worry really more about malware and cybersecurity, how terrorists are really, you know, trying to enter our network than we do about, you know, the physical security. The physical security we have in place with the Solano Verde gate and the gate around our facility, you know, gives us a lot of protection from a physical standpoint. And if they took our site physically out, we do, as Dave mentioned, we do have another site that we can, we can, we can switch to, to control our satellites. Paramount to this site is the FAA service that Dave talked about that supports the airplane networks throughout the world. That's critical to this location as well. One thing that wasn't mentioned, but I heard in the case before that I'd like to comment on, is the RF radiation. Around the perimeter that we have our fence, we do monitoring on a monthly basis to measure the levels to make sure we're in compliance with the FCC, and the levels that we do read are basically zero, negligible. So we do that not just for the community as, you know, good neighbors and good participants in the homeowners' association, but we do that for the public safety of our employees as well. So from an RF standpoint, from a radiation standpoint, number one, we're totally in compliance with the FCC, and number two, we feel like we have, you know, a very safe operating system, system there. So what I'd like to also just say is that we feel like we've been since 1974 good citizens of the, the environment. We've joined the homeowners' association, and, and we feel like we've, we've accommodated all the requests that have, have been there. So I leave it at that. Dave has the specifics. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer. But from a business standpoint, you know, Dave answered about the five additional antennas, what would happen if they weren't granted. This also has the CUP attached to it. If the CUP was not granted, there's significant impact to, to SES for trying to reduplicate this facility somewhere else. So it is a significant issue for, for SES. And just so you know, SES stands for Society of European Satellites, a work corporation that's based in Luxembourg over in Europe, so, and we're, SES Americom is the European component of that. So any other question, I'd be happy to answer at any time.
Thank you. Any questions to Michael this time? Thank you for explaining the ORF. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers that have not filed a card that would like to speak in favor of the conditional use permit? Hearing none, seeing none. Then I shall move on to the one opponent, and I have a Gary Arnold. Counselor, if you could give us a name and address, sir?
My name is Gary Arnold. My office address is 300 Esplanade Drive, Suite 2100 in Oxnard, California.
Thank you.
And I'm an attorney, and I represent Mr. Robert Laberan. Candidly, this is at least the third time I've appeared over here with respect to this project. I was one of the ones in, in opposition in the early 90s when the last, really, the first major go-around was for the extension of the CUP, the proliferation of the satellite dishes and the like. I've submitted the two letters that I think the commissioners have probably already seen and read. I don't want to repeat a lot of what's already in there. Let me just start basically quickly with the CEQA issue, and I know where we are and what, what you're charged with here, so I'm not trying to recreate the wheel. Really, the problem, though, was this facility was created or, and approved under its original CUP when there was no residential environment around it. It was in the end of a valley, no residences built. There was absolutely no consideration under the original CEQA environmental analysis of what impact that facility may have on later residential community. Solano Verde was then approved in the early 80s, and again, and to me, it's bizarre, but there was no real analysis of the compatibility of this facility with the residential homes. At the time, the facility was relatively limited, relatively small in terms of its footprint in the end of the canyon, with a relatively few, or fewer, satellite dishes and antennas. Over the course of the next 30 years, the antennas have, have multiplied, there has been little oversight, and every time we come here, we get the same word. Well, the facility exists, and so we're not permitted to basically go and look at the environmental impacts anew because it's part of the environment, notwithstanding the fact that the county has continually approved, the increase of number of dishes, the size of the dishes, the visual impact, and if not to the general public, to Mr. Laberan, whose house sits up on the hill, and every day, he, his wife, his family drive up their driveway, drive down the driveway, there is this unbelievable monstrosity looking at him in the face. Does he like it? No. And really, that's why, that's why we're here. We, we think the circumstances have changed dramatically out there. We don't think that this facility belongs in this residential community. We are concerned of the transients coming in, the workers coming in, the, you know, the, the lack of, of access and water and, and the like. I will definitely say this, in one of the earlier pictures that Christine showed, you saw the starkness of the facility back before we got involved, and they, SES has done a nice job screening it by the, the local landscaping, and they've done a nice job, and I want to give, give them, you know, credit for, for doing that. Nonetheless, it's there. From Mr. Laberan's house, it is a complete eyesore and, and very tough. Again, I'd like to comment now on an additional five satellite dishes, 15 monitoring, yes, within the same physical footprint, but that is just adding to the overall intrusion in this residential environment. We are asking for, and we don't know the answer, we, we can't go and talk to Mr. Westlin and his, and his supervisor, whatnot, about whether or not these dishes are really necessary. Can we pull down one or two or three of the larger ones? Are they really there serving any purpose, given current technology, or is it just cheaper to keep them there, even though they're not used or really not needed? And we think that the commission should give some serious thought to limiting the future expansion, even within the footprint, so that, so that the site, you know, maintains viability, assuming that the CUP is extended, which candidly, I assume it probably will be, but, but we would like to see a reduction in the, the scope and intensity of, of the facility. With that, I think really everything else is in, in my letters. Appreciate your consideration of the concerns of Mr. Laberan. He is by far the most impacted by this, so I'll leave it to your sound discretion. Unless you have any questions with me, that will conclude my presentation.
Any questions to Gary? Commissioner Ronson?
Yes, sir. Do you have any specific health and safety concerns regarding this operation?
Specific to Mr. Laberan?
Not a specific, curate order to the public at large, health and safety issues.
You know, I'll take it face value. I think we have to. The SES indicates that the amount of, of the radio frequency transmissions emanating from this facility really are fairly negligible at the fence line. We went through quite an ordeal in the early 90s when that came up. Honestly, we didn't, we didn't go out and hire the experts, you know, to, to really measure it and to determine whether or not there, there is a significant risk of cancer or some other kind of health and safety. I don't have any evidence to, to give you to, that would suggest that there is a danger from the emissions from the facility. Is there some health and safety issues just with respect to a commercial enterprise, the traffic going in and out of the private road, the water trucks going in and out, the maintenance of septic systems with, for their sanitary purposes? Fairly negligible, I think, honestly, but, but certainly, there is an impact.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions to Gary? Commissioner Paul?
So, so how do you answer, you know, buyer beware? This, this, this operation was there long before your client's house was?
The point was what was permitted at the time, and I can tell you, because we went through all of this in much more detail back, back in the early 90s. The residents believed that it was a limited 10-year CUP that was going to end. They thought that, that this was a temporary facility, number one, and that because of the growth of the community, nobody would allow it to continue going forward. Also, at the time, it was very limited in terms of the number of satellite dishes and antennas. It was not as intrusive as it is today. So, yeah, the buyer beware, we knew what was there. We thought it was going to go away.
You thought? So did you ever think of asking?
Well, again, the CUP was only for 10 years. That expired basically in 1994, 1995. Most of the homes in the, surrounding that area were built in and around the mid 80s. That's really when Solano Verde's track was approved in 1980, and I... And I haven't gone back and looked at all of the building permits when everything was being built. But it was basically in the mid 80s to late 80s, early 90s.
Okay, but the thing is, is most CUPs can be renewed. So would that not be a caveat to put in the sales building for all these homes and say, hey, this can be here forever?
Probably would have been a good idea, and probably some of the residents who built their million-dollar-plus homes maybe should have asked legal counsel at the time of what the chances of the extension of the CUP were. But they were sitting there saying, well, there's a CUP, it's got a 10-year term, it ends in 1994. This facility is gone. Naive, uninformed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I can't, you know, this, again, I was there in part of this process, and I talked to, at the time, I represented three neighbors, Mr. Laberan, Mr. Wolfle, whose house is on the south, and Mr. McGee, whose house was purchased by SES to actually create this better buffer, if you will, with the neighborhood. So.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions, Gary? Gary, before you go, for my mind, when I talk with counsel, to me, your central issue is whether or not there has been new information of substantial importance that was not known or could have been known as far as SEQA, whether or not to trigger NEIR. That's what you're saying, because of the visual impacts and all of those, that nobody could have foreseen when they did the original declaration?
Well, and again, in this hearing, they're asking for 20 permission, for 20 new dishes when they have 18 now. That is, again, it's in the same footprint. Does that add anything more? Do you have to look at, you know, other things under SEQA? I think that in and of itself is a changed circumstance that was certainly not contemplated the last time around.
Well, in my mind, one part of what you said is in 1978, none of us knew what the satellite world would look like today. So that's where my mind is. As far as the same footprint, and again, just for your benefit, we're having the same conversation with oil wells. Okay, so, but I'm going to visit with staff on this issue as far as the not-known type situation, as far as results. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think it's really in my letter and my presentation. Thank you.
And by the way, thank you for both letters. They're very articulate, and it got to the core issue without having to go through the dictation.
I don't, I can't remember.
Yeah.
Commissioner, you may have been here for the earlier go-around, so I wanted to make sure that everybody had kind of history of where we were.
It wasn't gray then, it was red.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, before we move forward, I would like to take a five-minute recess. So we'll come back, and the applicants will be allowed to talk to anything, and then we'll go to staff. All right, five-minute recess, thank you. Welcome back from the recess. We thank you for your consideration on that matter. We are continuing now. We have just finished with the last opposition. This is now for the applicant, if there's any additional comments that they would like to make, or you don't have to, but it's certainly your opportunity. Your name, please.
David Westlin.
Thank you.
I'd like to just comment on a couple of things. Our CUP was not granted for 10 years, it was granted for 40 years, 1985, up to 2025. And then there were 10-year reviews to verify that we were compliant with our conditions. And that's what we went through in 95, and again in 2005. And we're coming up for it again, to state that we're compliant. I mentioned of the 20 new dishes. I want to state again that 15 of these dishes are relatively, could fit inside a 10-foot circle. So it's really not something that's going to be a large addition to the site. They may be on the roof, a small dish on the roof, or on a little pole outside. They wouldn't all necessarily be there all the time. If a customer comes along and says we need something, we put it up, look at it, see what he's doing, maybe we have to keep it there for two or three months, and then it's out of use again. And that's happened quite often. We have these things. We also support ongoing problems with interference in our satellites, and sometimes we have to put a small dish in to simulate what the interference looks like. All of our antennas are in use right now, the 18 permitted antennas. Four of them are specialty antennas. One of our jobs at this location is to test the payloads on new satellites that are launched. They put them out in the Pacific Ocean where they're away from everybody. And because we're on the West Coast, we can see them, we test them to verify that they're operating correctly and that the maps, so that they come down in the right spots in the United States, are mapped in that location, and that site is used for that particular thing. There is one big antenna in the center that's unique to the site. It operates on a type of electrical function that only the Pacific satellites have. And it's the only satellite antenna we have that does that. And we have used it to support other operations when there's been failures for other West Coast facilities that we don't own. So it has come into use quite, and it is continually used to monitor payloads of a satellite that we have out in the Pacific Ocean. Also, I want to point out that we did pay for landscaping for Mr. Laberan's property. From the 1997 system, we gave him a significant amount of money to plant and irrigate trees on his property. So had there not been a fire in 2003, which burned through that whole property, and it dead-damaged his landscaping at the time, but it's been growing back, and in probably another five years, he won't see anything. His house is technically over the top of the hill. He cannot see us from his house. He can only see us when he comes down his driveway. So that's really all of the comments I had regarding that. Anyone have any questions?
Any questions of David? Paul?
I have one. Are all those satellite dishes currently in use?
Yes, every single one. Well, except for the four that we use for special testing. But each one has a different band of frequencies, so we can't just take one antenna and test all satellites. Because there's some that work with small dishes, they're called KU, you find those on gas stations. C-band is what's used by the cable TV industry. Direct broadcast is used by DirecTV and Dish Network. And we own and operate satellites that they use. We don't fly them personally, but we test them. We have one antenna for that. And then there's a newer frequency out called KA, which is really tiny little dishes, and we have one antenna for testing those type of payloads. Those four antennas are there for those testing purposes. All the other antennas actually have telemetry coming through them or payload information going through them.
So, but if at some point you have a dish that's no longer needed, do you take it out, or do you replace it with something else you need?
Chances are, we would take it out or modify it to use it for a particular need. I would rather not build a new antenna if I didn't have to, because they're expensive. And if I can find another use for it, I'll do that with modification. If there's, there hasn't been a time I don't think that I've ever had the luxury of saying, I got a spare antenna, I can use it for anything I want to. It's never happened.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, David? Thank you very much. Any other comments before I close the public hearing? All right, I will close the public hearing now. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Dukas.
When we talk about impacts in our SEQA analysis, is there a certain number of people that, you know, have to be impacted before it's considered significant? Or can one person's impact be considered significant, say, of visual impact?
This is a question from County Council?
Yes.
Thank you.
My understanding of SEQA in terms of visual impacts is that the analysis centers on impacts from public vantage points. And so in this instance, my understanding is that one private resident has visual impact issues. But my understanding is that because those issues don't arise from a public vantage point such as a road, that they cannot constitute a significant impact under SEQA.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? I would like to visit what I raised as far as the, in our staff report, we have said that there is no new or substantive that was discussed, I believe, in our pages 24 and 25 in the staff report that says that there aren't any substantial or that we would not have known of. And I get back to the issue that nobody knew the growth of the satellite community in the 70s and 80s that we do today. Could staff address that for me?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I am particularly gratified that our staff reports are actually being read. Would be my first thought.
Well, understand, you've got two lawyers up here, we live for this kind of thing.
Yeah, I would just like to read it, you know, we have two issues here in terms of approving a conditionally permitted use. One is the SEQA analysis that we've done adequate for your decision-making, and the other is whether you can make the appropriate findings to approve this condition use permit. On the SEQA basis, County Council is entirely correct, is that if you can't see a facility from a public viewing place, there not only is not a significant SEQA impact on visual resources, there is no impact. And that's a decision that goes back to the 90s from people in robes, that SEQA doesn't protect private views. And so there isn't a SEQA issue here in terms of the appearance of the facility from any of the private places within the Solano Verde subdivision or canyon. Another thing is that the facility, in terms of its footprint, has not changed. In fact, under this permit, it'll be decreased slightly, and in fact, it's one component that involves a visual impact is going to be removed. And so that is the existing tower that's on the site was going to be taken down. And so at that point, the facility will truly not be visible from any public viewpoint. So the nature and character of the facility, even with adding a few more antenna dishes in between and attached to buildings inside this same footprint, I believe it's staff's analysis that you'd hardly be able to tell the difference once you have 73-foot diameter dishes and all these other dishes around. It'd be really difficult from a visual standpoint to tell the difference. And then even in the private community, you know, including what we've heard today, is that you can't see this facility except through the vegetative screening, which is pretty substantial, from any of the houses. You can see it from private driveways. And so there is no visual impact or SEQA issue with the way this facility is designed and the proposal before you today. I'd also like to point out that the previous approvals, that is, the dishes that have been added in the past and the changes in the facility in the past, well, for today, that's part of the existing setting upon which we're evaluating impacts and judging the project. And the place essentially is what it is, and, you know, the issues of compatibility and adequacy of SEQA were, of course, dealt with in previous permit episodes, some of which Mr. Westner and his father dealt with during, you know, previous hearings. So, and now the second question is compatibility, the compatibility finds you have to make. And the Solano Verde subdivision is a group of large lots, the minimum size of 38 acres, that is very low density of residential use. And the nearest house to the facility is almost 1,000 feet away. In looking at that setting and the fact that, you know, we have one person here today who says, I can see it from my driveway, and it looks hideous, we don't think that rises to the level of being an incompatible use in this low-density rural setting. So this appears to be an appropriate place to put a facility like this, where very few people can see it behind block gates, these two of them, and this looks like it's a compatible facility. And that's why we're glad that you read page 24 of your staff report, or really any part of the staff report.
Thank you, staff. Now, I want to thank Mr. Arnold for his nine-page letter, so I had two places to look at this. And I appreciate you stayed under the 10-page limit this Superior Court requires, so you didn't have to index for me. All right, thank you for that discussion. Any further, before I go too much further, just for Gary's benefit of mind, that was the 1990s, not the 1890s that we went through this. Referring to my age. Any other questions of staff at this time? Hearing none, what is the commission's pleasure?
I would move the recommended actions in our staff report.
Okay, I have a motion for a recommended action. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, no. And if you wish to abstain, hit your magic button. The matter carries 5-0. I believe the county will advise Mr. Arnold of his appeal time periods if he needs to appeal. All right. Thank you, everybody, for being present today. Enjoy your trip out from Princeton. It's a little sticky back there, I'm sure you're enjoying it better here. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we'll move on now to the rest of the agenda. Discussion, items by the planning director. We get to go on a field trip.
Yes, thank you, Chair Westner. A couple of things I want to update you on, on the tentative agenda and of a passed action that you took. The first thing I wanted to let you know is the City of Moore Park did appeal your June 27th Commission's 5-0 approval of the Grimes Rock facility. So they appealed that, the city did, to the Board of Supervisors. The applicant is working with the city, Mr. Cochran is working with the city to see if he can settle things out. If that is not successful, that will probably be to the board sometime in September after their recess. And then to our next hearing, so we have a hearing next week. It is the general plan of amendment zone change, a PD permit and a tree permit for a 60-unit subdivision. Now, we are going to meet, and we're going to drive out there individually, and I'll meet at the site. So it doesn't have an assigned address, but it's at the corner of Catherine Road and Pepper Tree Lane. So we could probably get Lori to send out a little map, if you haven't already, to let you know exactly where we'll be meeting. So we'll be meeting at 10:30 for the site visit. And then Lori has, I think, things up there for you to order for lunch. And then, so we'll have lunch together back at the City of Simi Valley. We'll find an appropriate room for that. And then our hearing will once again start at 1 o'clock in the City of Simi Valley Chambers. Also, we have prepared a rather large exhibit for you, so that is for you to take home. It's the Catherine Road exhibit. It's large, and obviously will be very unwieldy on our iPad. So that's that. We should have later today or first thing in the morning your packet ready to upload on your iPads, and then a copy available for Mr. Anstott to pick up as well. And then, let's see, we also have a hearing coming up on August the 8th. So I believe that all of you are going to be there for that. That is a condition use permit for a temporary outdoor events facility that the county is recommending denial on. And then we have a September 12th hearing for our density bonus ordinance and our housing element update. And then I believe that we have something that's already scheduled on the tentative for November. It's not on this, but I heard that we had something put on it this morning. Because we were talking about doing that first and third Thursdays. So I do believe that there was a unanimous vote here, that everybody wanted to go that direction. And as you know, your bylaws state that the regular meeting schedule shall be fixed at the first regular meeting of the calendar year. So, you know, I have consulted with County Council about that. He does feel like we could change that anytime during the year if we, you know, agendize it appropriately. But we already have schedules going, we already have tentative meetings all the way out to November already. So I think...
Excuse me, Kim, what's the date, November you were talking about?
21st. 21st. Okay.
Thanksgiving.
And since typically November and December are pretty light, that I think that we'll instruct the staff to really try to stay to those first and third Thursdays, maybe to the end of the year. And then we can adopt that at the first of the year, or it would be your commission's pleasure, we could try to accommodate the schedule to make sure from, you know, from this point forward, and we can bring that back as an agendized item. But I believe the September 12th hearing is not on a first or third Thursday. So it's up to you, whether you want us to address it after September, or whether you wanted to address it at January 1. wanted to address it at January 1.
Okay, anything else?
And then also, I wanted to talk to you a little bit, or actually have our County Council here talk to you a little bit about the action that the board took on Tuesday regarding site visits for individual members of boards. And then also to talk to you a little bit about communications that you may or may not receive after we have an application on file. So I'm going to let Mr. Barnes chat with you about that. And did you give those to them, Lori, already? The board's action? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Yeah, so as Kim mentioned, the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday approved a revision to the county's land use hearing rules. And more specifically, it approved a modification to the existing field investigation rule to allow site visits by individual board members under specific circumstances, which I want to go over with you today. And, and just as, let me maybe take a step back to put the, the new site visit rule into perspective. The, the general rule in terms of the, the land use hearings is, is stated in Rule 11 of the county's land use hearing rules. And that Rule 11 is entitled "Information obtained outside the public hearing." And the, the general rule there is that information should not be obtained outside of the public hearing. And so it's important to, to understand Rule 11 and how the, the next rule, Rule 12, field investigations, is basically an exception to that rule. And so I'll just really quickly remind you and go over the provisions of Rule 11. Again, Rule 11A states a general rule that except for the new, basically the new field investigation rules, no members of the hearing body shall, after an application has been filed, and that means any land use application has been filed with the county, solicit or receive evidence outside of the public hearing on the matter for which the public hearing is required under state or county rules. And so that's, you know, again, states a general rule. Then Subpart B gets more specific, and it, it cautions hearing body members against having personal contacts with anyone regarding any matter that could come before the hearing, including correspondence by telephone regarding any substantive issues. And it recommends that hearing body members, if, if you're contacted by an applicant or an opponent regarding a matter that's going to come before your commission, just to remind them of this rule and, and tell them to basically show up at the hearing and voice their opinion at the hearing itself, consistent with, with this rule and with, with state law. And I guess I should back up again, and as I'm sure you all know, these rules are basically implementing the general state constitutional law that, that requires us to conduct hearings in a, basically in a fair way that comports with due process. And so you're acting in a, in a quasi-adjudicatory manner. So you're basically sitting up there like you're judges in a court of law. And, and so the basic rule is that you can only consider evidence that's presented during the hearing itself to give everyone a fair opportunity to have their say and to see what evidence they're dealing with, either for or against the project. So going back to Rule 11, Subpart C, that's basically, it, it tells the, the hearing body members that in the event you do receive information outside the public hearing, which you're not supposed to do, you're, you have to disclose it, which you have a practice of doing, which is great, at the hearing, just to give everyone for or against the project the opportunity to, to know what evidence you have received outside the hearing so they can rebut it or ask you about it even, just to, to make sure the record's clear and everything's put on the record at the hearing itself. And so then that brings us to, to Rule 12, Field Investigations. And the new rule that the board approved on Tuesday, I'll just go ahead and read the, the new rule. There's a new Subpart A entitled "Individual Members," and there's a Subpart 1 to A. Hearing body members may make site visits for the sole purpose of observing the site and its physical and operational characteristics regarding a matter scheduled for hearing, provided that no more than two members visit the site together except as provided in Subpart B below. And Subpart B basically restates the existing rule, which is, and which, which your, your commission is going to take advantage of, which is you can have a, an agendized meeting at the site as a group. And so that, that's still in effect. And so this, this new individual member rule is, as I just read, it's limited to site visits by, by two or less individual members. And the two number comes from the Brown Act. If, if three of you go and visit a site individually, then it turns into a Brown Act meeting and it needs to be agendized. And so keep in mind that, you know, two of you can go, but no more than two. And do you have a question?
Just clarification, that means together, right? Two together. But, but serially, each of us could go to the site independently.
Exactly, that's a good question. And please keep asking questions as they come up. And, but along those same lines, and it's, it's more of a Brown Act issue. If, and the, this new rule kind of raises a lot of other potential issues. One potential issue that could arise is if more, if you serially, individually visit the site, you shouldn't discuss the, the site visit with, with each other because that could cause a, you know, serial meeting under the Brown Act. So just keep that in mind, too. And then I'll get this go to Subpart 2 under the, the new individual site visit rule. Upon a visit to a site, hearing body members may be accompanied by county staff and/or other persons for the purposes of obtaining site access or being directed to characteristics of the site for viewing. No other evidence, presentation, or argument shall be received from county staff or other persons during the site visit. And so this, this provision is really important, and, and what it gets at is the entire purpose for individual site visits is to allow you all to go out and just look at the physical and operational characteristics of the site. You're absolutely not allowed to go out there and, and get lobbied basically by opponents or applicants. And if they start, if you're out there and they start doing that, then you just have to tell them like, we can't do that. Don't talk to me about this, I'm just here to look at the site. And, and the, the purpose for basically saying you can be accompanied by persons other than county staff is to deal with a situation where you need a landowner's access to get into a site and to be, to get toured around. It's just a practical issue that we have to address if you're going to be able to get to some of these sites. So that's basically it. And then in terms of timing, when, when this rule comes into play, it's a, a little bit confusing, but that's where you have to read the new Rule 12 together with Rule 11. And so the, what Rule 11 says is that you can't receive any evidence outside the public hearing. That rule kicks in right when someone files an application for any land use permit or, or the county's bringing in enforcement action against someone. So right when that happens, even if the matter hasn't been appealed to the planning commission, for instance, that's when Rule 11 starts, comes into play. And so once that happens, you're technically not allowed at that point to make a field investigation and visit the site until, and then that's where you have to go down to Rule 12, until the, the matter is scheduled for hearing before your commission. Once, once a matter is, for instance, appealed to the planning commission or it makes its way onto your agenda, that's when you can go out and make a, a site visit pursuant to Rule 12, if that makes sense. So do you have any other questions? And, and I know issues could arise when we're implementing this new rule, and I guess I just want to stress, if you do have questions, and that's my job is to answer them, and so please feel free to contact me. And it's better to ask in advance as opposed to having an issue raised at the hearing itself.
Any questions? I'll raise one because this came up about 15 years ago. We basically followed that procedure, and what we did is we coordinated with staff person on the matter to gain access to the property. And that was raised later in an action that that constituted a serial meeting simply because of the coordination through a center hub. As far as the future, should we use county staff to make those types of arrangements or should we do that ourselves?
You're more than welcome to, to do that yourself. And, and I'll let, I'll let Kim address this, too, but I don't see any need for you to, to coordinate with, with county staff unless there's a specific reason, too.
Yeah, that was the specific point that the City of Calabasas went at, was the fact that for the communication purposes, that that constituted the center of the serial meeting situation.
And I wouldn't be worried about, about that argument being asserted against us. If, if, if the contact with county staff is, is just for logistical purposes to implement the site visit rule, then there's no Brown Act issue. So I wouldn't worry about that.
Well, just so you know, Judge Walsh agreed with you.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess maybe a-
No, but it was, but it was what was raised, and that was, so I want to keep us out of that if we can.
Okay.
All right.
Was that with regard to Amundson?
Yes.
And that was because you coordinated through a single point or I, my recollection was that the objection was that the public wasn't allowed.
But no, but what they based it on was-
That was the scuttlebutt.
No, what it was based on is we went through a central point to arrange for separate visits. So then there was an implied agreement of a meeting? Okay.
Sure. And, and what if there was a private property owner? I know it would have been helpful to me to be able to go to some of these mines, particularly the one in Ojai, and you would have to coordinate with, with the property owner. So how do we, I want to avoid that.
Yeah, no, you can. And I, I should learn more about the facts of that case, and I think there's-
City of Calabasas versus Ventura County Plan Commission.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm kind of surprised by, I'll have to look at the facts of the case, and I can follow up with you on that. But I mean, I, my understanding is if the, if, if your communication with staff is just to coordinate a site visit, especially if it's individual, then I don't see how that could raise a Brown Act issue that I'd be worried about.
But what about dealing with, you know, a property owner?
You're allowed to do that, and that's what we, we built into the rule. You're allowed to-
So there's no serial, there's no argument that there's a serial meeting in that case?
It would depend on the specific facts. If, there, there, there could be a problem or there would be a problem if, if one of you made a site visit and, and toured basically with the, with, with the owner or the operator, and you were given substantive information and, and then that, actually, I'm not, I don't even see it in that hypothetical. I was going to say then another one of you goes and gets the same information from the owner. I think you would have to communicate amongst yourselves, though, with, with that information.
And isn't that also like taking care of when you make your disclosures, too? Because there's all kinds of people who'll talk to you. And, and you just need to disclose that? Is that good enough?
It is. And I forgot the, a really important part of this rule, because it was on the next page. Subpart C of the individual site visit rule basically reiterates the, the last part of Rule 11, which is if you do make an individual site visit, then you have to, during the disclosure portion of, excuse me, the hearing, you have to disclose that you visited the site and describe in general terms what you saw. And so that's, that's essential.
Okay, clears mud for everybody? No, thank you.
You know what? I think it's great. I think it's great. And a lot of times I've, I have felt ill-prepared, even though I read every staff report, every page of every staff report, and sometimes multiple times when I go, wait, what? And so being able to clear up a lot of these, you know, questions of, of impacts or proximity, how high something is, how big something is, this is just, it's going to make things so much better. So thank you.
I agree, because I've always believed that's, as, what we deal with land, it's not something you pick up and bring in here. It really is a three-dimensional entity. And to see it in its natural habitat, for lack of a better term. As far as our investigative powers, I think that's, that's an absolute, so we can render an informed decision. So I applaud County Council for championing this through the Board of Supervisors. Anything else for the good of the commission? Hearing not, we'll adjourn to next week for the field trip. See ya.